And we'll call the meeting order.
Rock, morning sounded fun.
Do we have any citizens comments? Hearing none. We'll go to the presentation by the, Renee.
I just want to introduce Ron. Ron is here from RHR Smith &amp; Company. They are our auditors. This is year two of a three-year contract, I think we have with them to be conducting our annual audits. It has been a pleasure to work with Ron and his staff. So, without further ado, I will turn things over to him.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm here to go over the June 30, 2016 audit for you all. And I can say that your financial condition improved. You've got the highest opinion that we can give, which is an unmodified opinion, you know, as of your state of your books. And your fund balance went up to about $430,000 from $300,000 from '15 to '16. And you used about $300,000 to offset taxes this year that you're in right now. It's about to end on June 30, 2017. So, again, financially improved. The reason why it went up was largely because you did not spend all your money. You know, that you had budgeted for in '16. You returned it back to your bottom line, and then you re-appropriated it again for this year that's about to end in '17. So, we have over $300,000 in capital reserve in addition to that. I understand you spent some of that. I just walked over some of your new pavement, you know, getting into the school. So, I know some of that went down. But I would say that this district is in very good financial condition. One of the things that we're working on with Renee's office, the business office, is best practices at the school for student activity accounts. So, we continue to do that for all the schools, you know, within the union. But I'll say this for Renee's staff. They've been enjoyable to work with, very cooperative, very diligent in getting us any information, and certainly, it's been a great relationship. It really has. So, if you have any questions of me, I certainly am here to answer what they may be.
Anybody got any questions?
I had a couple.
Sure.
Keep it quick. You just mentioned the activities, was that activities fund?
Student, the students' money, kids' money.
Yeah, I remember a year ago.
Yeah.
I think there was some issues there. And in the, in the opinion, you use the expression "major funds." Each major fund, the sentence is, sorry, I'm taking out of context here. In our opinion, the statements refer to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the activities and each major fund of the school district. So, are the, are the activities monies not part of a major fund?
They wouldn't be a major fund, no. There's, there's an algorithm that we use, and it's a science, you know, how we arithmetic to what major is, and there's a word in our profession called materiality. So, and when your school budget's around $4 million, we take a percentage of that, and I'm doing real simple arithmetic. And that percentage is, derives the materiality. That's how you determine your major funds, and student activity funds wouldn't qualify that. I think you have about $14,000 in your student activity funds, and probably, at the highest point during the year, it would be $25,000, $30,000. So, that wouldn't be considered a major fund.
Those funds are part of the audit?
Correct. We do look at those funds, correct. Even though they're not material.
And if you were to find, as you did last year, some concerns about them, are you reporting on those?
Yeah, so we do. And, and the business office would have that, and we could share with you exclusively at Shasberry, absolutely, absolutely, the comments that we have.
Just one other question. This is at the back now, on page 57, the internal control section. And I know that this is mostly just boilerplate, and that you report that you didn't find any, any material weaknesses. That's at the top of page 58. Does the, does the, sort of the level or depth of your work allow you to say, one way or the other, "We didn't find," or "We did find deficiencies, significant deficiencies"?
The answers, so the answer is, the reason why that report that you're referencing in the back is in there, is because the State of Vermont Agency of Education requires it, you know, and they require it because you're an instrumentality of the United States of America, specifically the State of Vermont. So, that letter is called a yellow book letter, and your audit was done in accordance with government auditing standards. Those standards require that any funds, federal funds, that we would find issues with, you know, were required to report what they were. We didn't find any federal fund issues, you know, with Shasberry. A lot of the money that you get from federal funds actually passes through the supervisory union and then allocated out to the various schools within the district. So, but there's another piece called the management letter, you know, that we've given for the supervisory union. And the management comments would stem primarily around your student accounts, you know, to say that. No material weaknesses. A material weakness would be a condition that we found, like not reconciling your bank account, you know, all year, you know, that would adversely affect our opinion. We didn't see that throughout the supervisory union at all. And had we, you'd actually see that, you know, that comment.
You'd be mentioning that, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, and significant deficiencies?
So, there's two, so there's two types of crimes, I'll call them for lack of a better way, the, there's speeding, and then there's, then there's, you know, speeding and then hitting another car, you know? So, class A, class B, you know, whether it be felonies or misdemeanors. The speeding crime would be a significant deficiency. The felony would be the material weaknesses. They're the higher level of the, of the, of the issues, the deficiencies. And the reason why they're called material weaknesses, because if it was significant, you know, to the point where it would influence the reader's impact and decision on making a business decision, such as a bank lending you money because there was a problem with those financial statements, that escalates it from a deficiency to a material weakness.
Right.
And we didn't have any of those throughout the supervisory.
Neither of them, yeah.
Neither, no.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Yep.
Well, have a good evening.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Ventilation project update.
I can speak to that. Yes, you want to, Renee?
You know, you've been with us with John.
No.
I've got him going, but.
Yeah, no, John, John came by last week and spent a good chunk of time with Jay, walking around the building, poking around in the ceilings, a lot in the primary wing where we have the major concern. One thing that he did notice was, he thinks that some of the ductwork that we have down there is probably way too big for what we need, and we probably need to size that down, take the old duct rail, and get some smaller ductwork in there. But he still feels like we use a lot of the existing structures that we have. He is recommending at this time, he's thinking, leaning toward roof mount units. He thinks that might be the best. We already have existing ductwork that goes up to the roofs in three different locations. He thinks that might be the best way to go, but he hasn't given me a final report yet or anything like that. He is going to return on Friday to do a little more poking around and see Jay again. He was able to go through all our prints that we had, and he was able to find the drafts of some of the structures that he needed. So, that was, that was good, because Jay wasn't sure who we had with some of those things. So, he does plan to have a report ready for us by our June meeting.
Good. So, June meeting would be, give us enough time to get everything out. I know we're going to be tight.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll touch, I'll touch base with, with him, you know, to see where we are in terms of scoping drawings and things of that nature, and if we can start crafting an RFP to have kind of the drawings and the scope and everything ready for the board to approve. If by chance he has stuff ready sooner, I would certainly reach out and let you know if we should call a special meeting that would get us, you know, out on the street quicker.
Yep.
But I think with, his initial hope was that he would have the construction drawings ready to go by the end of May. So, I guess it really depends on what his findings are here, and being able to turn that around and get the drawings and specifications put together so that we have sets of documents that we can put out for bid.
Yeah, that's basically what I'd like to get the bid out as soon as we can.
Yeah, yeah. So, we will have to, we'll advertise that, and we'll reach out to, you know, area contractors as well and see if they're interested in bidding on that. We have to give them at least, at least two weeks, you know, to bid it. And we'll have a walkthrough, as we do with, you know, most of the bids that we have, that we put out, and we'll go from there.
Good. Anybody got any questions for Renee or Jeff or Jeff? Okay, thank you. Donna, you got the superintendent's report today?
I would, I would just say that we're, Mr. Kokeen is not here this evening. He had to go to Boston for a conference, and so he asked me to be here for him. We've been working with the principals and the directors of the SVSU, just trying to come up with our end-of-year plan, and he's planning to send out a memo to everyone very soon with the dates due to the seven snow days and the construction and the, and the length of the school year as it's all adding up. We're making just a few changes to the schedule at the end of the year in consultation with the middle school and the high school, and what their needs will be for time for exams and end-of-year activities, as well as all of the BSD action in terms of packing up and getting their buildings ready has really impacted what we do for everyone. So, we're still planning on those last three days for professional learning. It's, there's some very exciting activities planned, some, just as part of your importance in, on math instruction, we're having Dr. Mahesh Sharma come for two days. He is a well-known presenter in the area. We're just so fortunate to be able to have him come here. We're all actually kind of in shock, because he's such a big, he's the rock star of the math world, and he's going to be here working with our teachers and some of Shasberry's teachers, our interventionists, our special ed teachers, and teachers from other schools as well on math content and strategies as it applies to the Common Core standards, and how to improve our math instruction to meet those standards, which are much more in-depth. It's a lot more than calculation and, and fact fluency nowadays. It's about understanding concepts and problem-solving and communicating ideas. So, he is a very talented instructor, and he understands math concepts from the, from the ground up to help teachers themselves understand the development of math ideas so that they can teach to children, especially those who have some challenges in the area of math. So, we're very, very excited about him coming. And Act 46, I, I don't know where you are with your discussion of that, but the committee is, is almost ready to meet. I think they're planning a meeting for the formal committee in a, a week or two. I won't tell you a date, because I don't think it's, it's really been set yet. But North Bennington is still trying to decide whether to be part of that committee. They have not, they have not voted to be part of the committee, because they, they want to see the direction that takes when it is formed. But the committee can meet with North Bennington in attendance, and then we'll see where that goes from there. But they do understand the urgency of, that we need to move forward. Recently, the legislature did pass a bill that would extend the dates of the applications until, from July to November. So, that is, I think that is good news for us, too, in terms of our planning for future, future activities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see. We have the treasurer's report. I'll move it. We have a motion, and we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? No discussion, all those in favor? Carry. We'll do the budget transfer request. I'll move that also. We'll move, and we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
So, and maybe Renee, you, you put these together, Renee? Yeah, I got your name out, okay. So, we're moving $14,000 to cover the payment to John?
John Penny.
Okay. I guess it might, I was not clear on the sentence at the bottom.
So, we'd also like the board to recognize, so it's recorded in the minutes, the authorization to move the $74,000, which was a ballot article last year, to move that into the capital project fund.
Okay.
And then, on the fuel oil part of it, did we not pay for the fuel? How's that work? Why is that showing?
There was excess in that account, so we're actually taking that money to move it into the capital improvements to pay for the engineering services for the ventilation project. We looked at a couple of different areas, and at the last, the special meeting that we had, the board's decision was that that's where they wanted to take it from.
Sorry, I missed it.
I'm sorry.
No, I missed that meeting. No, that makes perfect sense.
So, that's, yeah, so we're just documenting.
Okay, so, so we're just, we're basically moving $14,000, and then we're also taking $74 from?
That was raised, you know, through ed funds. So, that money is sitting in the general fund right now, but it was a ballot article that passed last year, so that money just needs to be allocated into.
Right, right.
Does that need to be part of the motion?
We would like to have it recognized in the minutes, just for backup.
Thanks.
Okay, so you got the motion. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the transfer? Carry. Okay, consent agenda. I'll move that also. Move, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dave?
Second.
Discussion. Let's see. Consent agenda.
And you're moving the whole thing?
Yes. That's minutes. That's minutes, that's minutes of the two meetings that we had.
Yeah, it's both, 12th and 26th.
And I just tell Dave and Scott that we called that meeting as soon as we could, so that we could get everything into motion. That's why we didn't wait. We didn't want to, that we didn't want to have you.
No, no.
Understood, yeah.
I was a long ways away.
Yep.
And that, I have amended that there was a field trip that was added to the consent agenda, so that includes that as well.
And this is a question for Jeff, for the chaperones?
Yep.
You expect to be more than just four?
Nope, nope. They, the chaperones are really there more to take care of the kids in the off-hours. The Silver Bay and the interest classroom group takes over the kiddos for the most part, for all the different activities, and they have usually two to three staff of their own running each activity.
So, that baked up the minimum of, recommended minimum of, one chaperone for every eight kids, because you're using their staff as well?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. They take over quite a bit of the instruction and everything.
Just making sure.
They actually limit you, don't they?
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the math didn't work out, so I figured it out.
No.
Any other questions on anything? And this includes the minutes, the warrants, and the field trip.
Just for clarification, we're, we're approving the kids being able to go on a field trip, or are we approving the dollars?
Approving what it is. The dollars are already reported. You're just approving the trip, so.
Got it.
Any other discussion?
There was something on the voucher, Jeff, for a docs, for the roof company?
Yeah, I, no, I forgot to ask Jay about that this morning. I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay.
I wasn't sure what that was for. I saw that when I was looking through the warrants earlier. I missed that, Jay. It was a couple hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah. So, it's the voucher, 2012, page three? It wasn't much, but.
Yeah, I did, I did notice that, too, and I forgot to ask Jay this morning when he was in. I could ask him, and I'll let you know.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Carry. Policies. This is on the comprehensive HIV and blood-borne pathogens. I'll move them. Move, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we have a second. Now we have a discussion. Any discussion?
We have a policy committee rep.
That was my first, that was my first meeting that I got to. Interesting.
Exciting.
Oh, we're off. After a while, trust me.
Interesting.
He said interesting, that can go either way.
Probably could. Well, I could speak a little bit to this policy if you'd like me to.
Okay.
Just, I mean, looking at it quickly, it seems that the revisions are just minor edits.
Yes.
They are. I think the reason that it was brought up was that it was brought to our attention that there are actually some of the documents that support this in terms of VOSHA's exposure plan, some of those pieces really needed to be brought up to date according to new regulations, and we need to attach some administrative regulations on the nursing, so that they actually have specific regulations on the responsibilities of the nurses in terms of blood-borne pathogens. It was especially about the blood-borne pathogen piece, and also to include that the universal precautions would be taught on an annual basis. So, we've already made that part of our start of the year for mandated procedures that we do with all staff members, so that there is notification.
You know, the one thing I have a question, the, you know, universal precautions shall be posted in key areas of the school. Are you expecting mostly just nurse's office or nursing main office?
No, no, it's really for everyone in case there's an accident.
Different locations?
Everyone needs to know their role in those situations about what, if they're supposed to do something or, or exit the area where there is.
And this is, for me, you know, do the teachers have access to universal precautions in their room in general?
I think that's part of this procedure, is that they all need to be taught what to do. And I don't think everyone has the materials in their room as much as they need to know who is the person in the building that's, that's responsible for that. Do they call the nurse, or do they call the custodian, and then those people are specifically trained?
You know, just to let me know, for me, it's like, you know, the key thing is, you know, gloves, you know? So, if all the teachers have gloves in their room, they could at least respond, yes.
It's in their emergency.
They have a kit, don't they?
They have their emergency back kit, and it comes with all that.
Yeah, perfect. That's what I was looking for.
And then there's a fair amount of discussion as just, who, who takes the role of sending certain people away, you know, making sure students are aware that they shouldn't go near, you know, go near the situations. And we tried to, we changed some of the language in there to try and spell that out a little bit more clearly as well.
And greater, a greater training than that it needs to be done annually. So, it really was just time for it to be updated and made a little bit more specific.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of moving it on? So, carry.
That was for warning.
Yes.
Okay, facilities.
No action for facilities.
Nothing on facilities, just waiting on that. Nothing on personnel?
Nope.
Okay, that brings us back to you, Jeff.
Yeah. So, I've got a few things to report on. Today, the, our safety and security team, which consists of Jay and Betsy Madison, who's my alternative admin when I'm out of the building, and myself, met with Victor Malani. He's the new SVSU school safety coordinator. Jim Kokeen has appointed him to work with all the schools in the district, to look at all our safety and security procedures, and safety and security of the schools in general, and kind of work with us and see if there's any ways we can improve things, any way we can look at things a little differently. He did a walkthrough with us when we did our lockdown today, and he said we did an excellent job. He said the kids, the teachers, everybody did a wonderful job, they did exactly what they're supposed to do. Everything was marked the way it was supposed to on the doors when we went through, the way Jay and I go through and unlock all the doors and check each room. He said we did a really nice job with that. He will be working with our team throughout the summer to look at the facility itself, see if there's any ways we can make things a little safer for the staff and the kiddos, looking at our procedures again, saying anything we can make them a little more streamlined with the rest of the district. And we may be coming to you with some recommendations in the fall. We'll definitely come to you with a presentation about what, what we came up with over the summer, but we may come with you in the fall and say, you know, Victor and I think maybe this is a good idea, or that's a good idea, that we may be asking you guys for, for different resources. The spring concert art show was on Monday night. We decided to do those back-to-back, ran top of each other this year, and it worked out really well. We had the art show from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and every student had a piece here on display. And then we had our spring concert from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. I want to thank Ms. Green and Mrs. Umflit, our music teachers, they did a wonderful job. The concert sounded wonderful. It was a pop theme, kind of. The kids sounded really good, both the band and the, and the chorus. And it was well-attended, because we had a lot of people here for the art show first, and then they came in and saw the concert as well. So, a lot of hard work went into both of those shows, and it, and it paid off on Monday night. And then, our annual big truck night is May 19th from 5:30, 7:30. And anybody that knows Shasberry knows that's a big night for us. It's become a tradition, I'm not sure how many years we've been doing it, but it's been for a number of years. The PTO is working hard pulling everything together. New this year is we're going to have a dunk booth. Per the idea of the PTL. So, so kids will have an opportunity to dunk yours truly, and maybe a couple of their teachers and staff will, will jump in and help me out, too.
Get some board members, come on.
I tried to get Fran to go.
I haven't said no.
He didn't say no, he didn't.
You know, I mean, jeez.
The kids are already talking about it. Word got out somehow to the kindergartners, and the kindergartners are knocking on my door, saying, Mr. Johnson, Wednesday, is this Friday? They're already looking forward to dunking me, I know that.
To the heated pool.
I hope so. I mean, I haven't delivered early, so we sit in the sun all day, so it's warm. It'll be a good time. I've done the dunk booth for the May fest before for the football team. It's always, it's always a good time. But we're going to have our traditional games. Oh, we have, I think, 17 big trucks lined up so far. And you'll have our games, our bouncy house, and a couple of other things. We're going to have a special recognition for the local fire department, volunteer fire department. The town is doing that at 6:30, and we're just going to say a couple of special things about our wonderful volunteer fire department that we have here in town. Still looking for volunteers. If anybody wants to come work for an hour or so in one of the games or helps serve food, they can contact me here at the school, and I can sign you up. But everybody's gearing up for that big night on, on the 19th. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, great. I don't have too much. The only thing I know is we have, we have to fill in our Act 46, other, other representatives?
Community rep?
Yep. Community rep?
We've had two applicants as of right, as of right now. We have one that I gave Donna a couple of weeks ago, and Jillian Davis is here. She's, she's interested as well. She got the application tonight, and she completed it, probably most of it. So, we have two applicants that are interested in that.
Okay.
We were looking for two?
One.
One, I think.
One, because Jeff signed.
Yeah, Justin.
Did you want to say anything, Jill, or? No, okay. Okay, so we have two applicants, and I think we should, we should give it, pick, pick one of those two to be, and actually, you can probably pick one and have an alternate or something like that, maybe, if the other one can't make it.
I'd just be an alternate.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
You okay with that? Is it okay to be an alternate?
I think so. It would be nice, actually, because it's, we like to have attendance at those meetings, and sometimes a lot of people can make it.
We can always make sure we got a full shot there.
Okay.
You would rather be the alternate, Jill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you live in, in, you do?
I live in Shasberry.
In this district?
Yeah.
Not in the District 1, but?
Yeah, she.
Okay, great.
Good question.
We should just get some very basic information.
Okay, so, we have a motion to that effect that will?
And then I'll make the motion to have Erin McKeeney be the rep, and Jill can be the alternate if needed. if needed.
Yep, and then we have a second discussion.
Probably not, I was, we were wondering.
If I were you, I'd abstain. All those in favor? Opposed and abstained? Okay, carry. Now we'll get Erin busy.
Yeah.
She's busy over there. And you were saying, I know you mentioned the meeting was yet to be scheduled, but there was to have been a meeting last night, I guess, and it was canceled the last minute?
Yes, it was canceled, yeah.
And we don't, we don't know.
23rd. Yeah, 23rd.
Is it set now?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Last I heard, they were still asking.
And that one never actually got warned for the last minute.
Okay, so it wasn't really canceled in the sense.
Okay. So, the next meeting in the Act 46 will be the 23rd. Okay, next regular meeting here is June 14th and we have our little goodies here. That's all I got. Anybody else got anything else?
I'll just do a quick thank you for the teachers.